Mayor to call to order the February 24th, 2025 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
During this month of February, Black History Month, we often found ourselves reflecting on the rich and profound contributions of African-Americans in the fabric, to the fabric of our society. The collective history of resilience, innovation, and unwavering spirit reminds us of the importance of honoring the diverse American heritage and ensuring that every voice is heard. As February comes to a close, we look forward to March, Women's History Month, where we celebrate the groundbreaking achievements and relentless pursuit of women throughout history. From pioneers in science and politics to trailblazers in literature and the arts, women's contributions have shaped our world in immeasurable ways. The transition from Black History Month to Women's History Month isn't just a change on the calendar, it's a testament to the continued recognition of diverse perspectives and the need for inclusion of varying experiences. It is a reminder that our strength lies in our differences and our commitment to justice and equality must be steady. As we move forward, let's commit to these values, celebrate the stories that make our lives richer, and work together toward a future where everyone has an opportunity to thrive. Together, we can create a world that honors and uplifts the unique contributions of all individuals. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent invocation, Commissioner Hunt. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Poprovsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask for a motion to remove item 6H from the consent agenda and add that to the regular agenda. That inadvertently got added to the consent by mistake. It needs to be on the regular because it does require a roll call vote of this body. So if that change could be moved and adopted, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Someone can do that in their motion. That would be wonderful. Commissioner Macy?
I approve the agenda moving item 6H off of the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Our motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to number five, public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. The city has made it easier for you to request follow-up on any issue. Simply scan the QR code you see displayed or sign in with staff in the lobby at the meeting tonight before speaking at public comment. And that will allow us, sometimes people have questions, they have concerns, if we have your contact information, we could actually follow up and say that issue's been resolved. Great question. Thank you for letting us know. I often tell people, we can't solve a problem we're not aware of, so you have to make us aware. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city commission wishes to hear from everyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And we have a timer up at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. It's always a good way to get ahold of us via email. Often, if you can get ahold of us a few days before the meeting, that's more helpful, so we can look into things and ask questions with you and get a clarity on what you're looking for. That's very helpful. Please note, the city commission typically doesn't respond to questions during public comment. However, we are writing those questions down, and when the topic comes up, we will ask those questions on your behalf to city staff, petitioners, whoever we're in dialogue with. Staff is also taking notes, and they do follow up. But again, you've got to leave your contact information if you actually want an answer from us. So we like to do the research, we like to get you answers. A lot of good questions have been posed here over my years, and you know, we always want to make sure those answers get to the rightful owner. And yeah, with that, who's first? I'm going to go with Mr. Page.
Thank you. I'm Ted Page, residing at 4314 Amherst Road. I'm the longstanding president of our neighborhood association, Royal Oak Beverly Hills Improvement Association. I'm here today representing the community engagement board, advisory board. But first of all, I'd just like to say, I think you're all doing a fantastic job. No, really. Somebody told me I had to say something positive just to throw you off your game. But, so anyway, good evening. Mayor Forney, your commissioners, my friends, my neighbors, I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk to you. I just want to talk about an event that we're having on Thursday, supported by the community engagement board at Farmers Market. And I'm really excited about it. It is the Neighborhood Resource Fair. If you haven't heard about it yet, we're not doing our job getting the word out there, so this is one more chance for me to get it out there. It's going to run from four to eight. It's all about Royal Oak neighbor-centric topics. We've got all sorts of different things that are going to be there to be presented, engagement for the kids, the families, food trucks, who doesn't love food trucks? But we also got the inter-club councils going to be there. I'm going to be there, representing neighborhood associations, trying to help people start a neighborhood association and show them how to run one. We have different events that are going to be pop-up events for seniors, and it's just going to be a lot of fun. So if you get the word out there, pass it on to your neighbors. I do have, if I could, present them to you.
Yeah, sure.
Something to tease you and maybe have you share with your neighbors. Put these together.
They look very neatly organized and put together. There's zero doubt that Judy put those together. Nothing against you, Mr. Page, but I know Judy.
What you do though, is the heading and all.
Oh, thank you.
But it is a tease to try and get you to share this with your neighbors. You recommend the neighborhood association, the second time you've ever done this, so we appreciate what you do and how you support us and allow us to be part of the community. I think part of the community board, so.
Well, we're grateful for the work you do and your association. It's always a pleasure to go and check in with your neighborhood, and certainly what you're doing on the community board as well is very.
Oh, and I ran over.
Well, we'll give a little bit of extra time for someone that gives a ton of extra time serving on a city board.
Well, I spent 10 seconds saying how good a job you're doing. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Page. Ms. Wagner.
Janice Wagner, give me 10 seconds to say, this looks really exciting. I've been following it on Facebook and all the information they're going to have. I think it's something that we really need in the city to get the word out on all these services and things we have available to the community. So, starting now, not 44, this is a good news, bad news type public comment. The good news, senior center finally has a fitness room. I've been advocating for its creation since 2018, so I want to thank the Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board, including Commissioners Macy and Cheesem for voting for it. But special thanks goes to Yolanda Botella for her research, survey, and everything else required to make it a reality. It was a lot of work, and I'm really, really thankful for it. Bad news, it's projected to cost roughly $1,250 per month to maintain, which was not included in this year's budget. So fees have been established for seniors to pay in order to use it. Other cities do not charge for their use, and I believe the city manager has the authority to have the general fund absorb these costs without a budget amendment. I'm requesting he does so or with your recommendation until the next fiscal year's budget is created or another source of funding can be found. More good, but old news. We were able to obtain a grant from Oakland County for renovations at the senior center, including making the bathrooms ADA compliant, new flooring, and a coffee center. Funding will be matched by the city using ARPA funds. Bad news, the project has been stalled due to incomplete architectural drawings. Both the Oakland County grant and ARPA must be fully expended by, I believe, the end of next year, or we lose it. I'm very concerned these much-needed renovations will not be completed by the deadlines. More good, but old news, we received over $28 million in ARPA funds. In February of 2023, a full two years ago, you approved the allocation plan. Bad news, since then, costs have gone up, and it appears many items have stalled or will not go forward. For example, we spent over $80,000 of the $200,000 allocated for the animal shelter, but no one is answering whether we're going forward with it or not. We gave the YMCA $25,000 that they have decided not to go forward with their proposal. Are the funds now going to their 11-mile facility, or are they now available for another project? Resulting in, a lot of the costs have gone up, and it's resulted in a $250,000 increase in the farmers market. So we've got a lot of juggling that we've got to do with the ARPA plan. So just like the Oakland County grant, if the money is not expended by the deadline, the federal government can ask for its return. In order to prevent this, I'm strongly recommending the commission either hold a special meeting or schedule time during a regular commission meeting to update the ARPA allocation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Gomez.
Evening, George Gomez, 2018 Guthrie Avenue, Royal Oak. What I'm here to do is, on the consent agenda, item number O, and specifically, under O it's F, is the zoning board of appeals annual report. And again, I do appreciate this report coming out because it really gives some of us a flavor for what we're doing and how things are turning out. I think what's missing in the report that I'd like to ask of you, and I think we would all benefit from, is that under the large lot, which is mentioned in there about how many times it's requested for variances over that, there's no percentage given about how many times it's been approved versus being denied. And a few of them had to come back again, so that number kind of would be gelled a little bit differently if you look at it from that end result for the year. I think what's important to us is to seeing how many times the zoning board has to struggle with that 3,500-square-foot limit on the large lot areas only. And I'm hoping that when this report, if it could be amended for your benefit as well as ours, to see these percentages, that you might reconsider raising that limit from 3,500, maybe to 4,500, recognizing these lots sometimes are as much as three times the normal lot that they're being compared to. So again, I think it's a great report, it gave me something to consider, but I think without those percentages, and you've seen that more often than not, the zoning board is agreeing that there is a struggle with the way it's written, and that we need your help in making that change. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Yes, sir, in the back.
Good evening, my name is Frank Hobert, and 20 years ago, I bought Hegelstein's Bakery. And in the course of the last 10 years, there's been a lot of hatred for that building, including my neighbor that dug a big hole and then pulled my building into his hole and then sued me for trespassing. Two years later, we were in Oakland County Circuit Court, and we finally got our building back, and it's been nothing but a nightmare. But I want to talk about something a little more recent, that on July 27th of last year, a young man, 22-years-old, got into a fight. He was drunk, and he put his hand through our window. This is the size of the window right here. It took five police officers to get him off the street. Then it took a couple of fire personnel to put him in an ambulance, take him up to Beaumont, and they cleaned him up. He was okay. But then we called DPW, and they came out and they put up a piece of plywood to cover up the broken piece of glass. Okay. Then your esteemed attorney started the process to get some justice. It's interesting, we say that, you know, during the Pledge of Allegiance, justice for all. Well, I thought we were going to get some justice, and I wasn't looking for a lot, but I did go to the police department, and I said, I want the cost of boarding up the window covered by the drunk guy. He had eight court hearings, had a court-appointed attorney, he had a $7,500 bond because he didn't show up for court. And your attorney just kept on going, kept on going. I gave him a copy of the bill, $432, to board up this piece of glass. Five police officers, two fire personnel, plus the DPW, plus the city attorney, plus all the people in the court, and the city attorney on January 2nd, first day of the business year, dismissed the case. Let the guy walk. Guess who got the bill? I did. This is not justice. The drunk guy should have paid it. I spoke with the city attorney. He says, well, get the money. Okay, fine. All I was asking for was the cost of the repair. Just board it up and reimburse DPW. I got nothing. I got a bill. Maybe you can help me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm David Cowper. I'm from Ajax Paving Industries, and my address is 6940 Granger in Troy. You might know my company from all the work that we've done in your city for the last 50 years. We've completed dozens of projects through the years, and we've always completed them on time and on budget. We're a locally-owned company, our office is right up at this street on Crooks Road, and I've been at Ajax over 37 years, and I've lived in Royal Oak on Gainesboro. My partner who builds all these jobs is Josh Matuzik, and he's a tax-paying resident of Royal Oak. I'm here to talk to you tonight about your responsible contract ordinance. It's my understanding that ordinance was designed to identify contractors that have the ability to perform public contracts in a timely and cost-effective manner. This ordinance rates contractors on a point score and system basis on a set of criteria. And I want to explain to you that how flawed we think your ordinance is. Based on the set of criteria, the low bidder has not always awarded the project. In fact, since 2022, the city has awarded contracts over the low-priced bid in excess of $1.5 million. $1.5 million. That's enough to pave 10 or 15 streets, maybe to build a park or two, playground or something. This just recently happened to Ajax with our bid for the 13-mile road project, cap 2509. We bid two jobs for you on February 10th, 13-mile road, and the other job, North Main and Coolidge Project, cap 2507. Now, these two bids are very similar, and both were about $2 million. They were bid one hour apart from each other, the same exact submittals were used for both our bids. We were the low bidder on each bid. But for some reason, we scored differently on the two evaluations despite having the same exact paperwork, and we lost the 13-mile road bid to a competitor. It's a good competitor, Cadillac Asphalt, we have no beef with them whatsoever. The competitor who may get the 13-mile road job is very similar to us in size and scope. We have the same union, similar equipment. We were told, one of the reasons that they scored higher was because of the perception that they had a better benefits plan. This is not true, because we provide the same benefits through the same union partnerships as to their employees, to our employees. It's exactly the same. On previous bids over the years, with the same submittals and same requirements, we scored higher because your process is being so subjective. So we received different scores for our bids, and the city's about to waste $133,000 on a non-low bid. We think the scoring system is flawed because it's so subjective and uses different reviewers to score the required criteria. How can two Ajax bids be scored differently with the same submittals? If you're building a private road for yourself, and it was about $2 million, and you bid it to two different guys, two different contractors, would you pay out of your checkbook $133,000 for the higher contract? You wouldn't. I also strongly encourage you to look at this evaluation and look at the ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you so much, okay?
Yes, sir.
My name's Jerry Lorette, I live at 512 Orchard View Drive. It has to do with the, what I'm going to talk about has to do with the sidewalk maintenance projects. I had one section replaced. I'm not going to get into the details of that. I submitted that, I believe you have a copy of that. My main point would be, for the residents thinking to the future, I walk Royal Oak a lot. I believe of the three criteria for the sidewalk replacement or repairs, the most prominent one, I would believe, would be the mismatch or the raising of sections from one to the other. And it's my understanding that it only takes a one-inch mismatch for it to be considered a trip hazard, which I would argue with that, but I'm not going to get into that piece of it. I've been in, I've worked with contractors, I've been a contractor, I've worked around construction my whole life. Here's my recommendation. I estimate, I recommend that they revise the process of total destruction and removal and get into cement grinding. It's quite economical, easy to do, and so I will read a part of what I submitted. I estimate this type of grinding repair can be done at 30% or less of the cost of the current practice. The current practice, they come in with equipment, they bust up the existing sidewalk section. Then they have to get a truck to load the concrete sections onto some sort of a dump truck. Then they have to take that to dispose either to a landfill or have that crushed. Then they come back, install the concrete forms, then they have to contract a cement company. They come back and pour the cement, and after that's cured, they have to come back, remove the forms and the barricades, and repair the damage to the lawn. In contrast, cement grinding, I'm running out of time, probably only involves two workers compared to probably 14 on seven, one trip versus six or seven trips. And it's also something that environmentally, we're using more resources for the cement, for the sand, for the water, for all of the fuel that's used on the heavy equipment coming back and forth, so please reconsider it. I know you're working with other people's money, and that doesn't always lend to the most efficient way of doing things.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
That's it.
Okay. Anybody else? We'll go with Mr. Harrison next.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, Trafford, Royal Oak. Given that this is African-American or Black History Month, this is appropriate. It's been over three years that I suggested that we have one of these standard green historical marker signs to regard the Hamer family. Given that, since then, you've developed a very attractive park, you have a monument statue for Mrs. Hamer, but there's no green marker. This is a story that has to get out there. The kids need to know the background of this family, and I'm asking you, what hell is the holdup? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harrison. Yes, in the front.
Good evening, Trish Oliver, longtime resident of Royal Oak. Free speech is being suppressed in Royal Oak. Residents can't come and speak with Royal Oak politicians at these city meetings without interference. I'm particularly referring to the large crowd that was at the Sheets Planning Commission meeting recently, and any other contested overly-dense project adjacent to single-family neighborhoods. We are citizens, and many of us are very intimidated to come up to the podium in the first place, let alone risk being badgered by the very people who are supposed to be working for us. Regardless, we are taking our time to come up to share our views, and you are abusing the power of your pulpit by doing such things as unfairly administering the three-minute time limit rule to favor your political campaign donors, calling out past mayoral candidates such as myself for no good reason, when I was simply sitting in the middle of a completely full audience, including sending the chief of police out to talk with me, and improperly engaging in a one-sided debate with someone who had just made public comment. All of these things have happened at recent city meetings and should not have. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to engage in spirited discourse as protected by the U.S. Constitution. Any attempts to suppress citizens' rights in an authoritarian manner is out of order. We at the podium only get three minutes, and then you politicians abuse the power of the pulpit to negate our input with derogatory commentary. You need to stop intimidating your own citizens. If everyone's input is considered and heard, we will get the very best outcome for Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, sir, in the back with the hat.
Michael Willard, 3003 Maplewood. As a directly impacted resident to meeting item 6L, I would like to request the city commission to refrain, table, or withdraw their vote on this agenda item until further date, and it's reevaluated fairly. After reviewing the proposed initial drawings for Clausen Park, it was nice to see improvements such as a swing replacement and addressing the drainage issue within the park, which is baffling. What is baffling is the relocation of the current baseball diamond and addition of concrete paths from the park entrance to the playground and surrounding area. Growing up and residing in this neighborhood, the baseball diamond was never quite right size for this almost entirely flat 0.29-acre park. Over the past 30 years, the diamond has been used sparingly and has not been maintained properly. A few years ago, a mini soccer field was implemented in the grass area of the park and made a positive impact on the community. The city was finally comprehending what people were seeking. To address the lack of maintenance of the park, Parks and Rec were contacted via city, website, email, and phone. It was recommended to PNR leadership to maintain the park or to resign, as they were not supporting residents in adhering to the PNR strategy. Another suggestion to leadership was to turn the diamond into an open multipurpose field, which is more reasonable option, as baseball diamonds are challenging to maintain. It was thought these items would be addressed and passed along to PR committee, but it appears they were not. When reviewing the proposed drawings with the baseball diamond in a complete new location, this was shocking. This would impede the CNN rail line, the use of native plants by parkgoers, and increased costs to relocate. Additional use would not actually occur. The proposed concrete pathways are not sustainable option and do not reflect the characteristics of the park, which has been green space prior to an exception in 1956. Current humans and small, large humans can traverse the grounds of the park easily without the need of concrete. It would be a horrible optics for the city and its commission to take a vote on any community-related item prior to the Community Resource Fair. It would set another attractive, unattractive city and commission precedent and does not align with basic civics processes. It is felt that Royal Oak residents do not sufficiently have all their input received, heard, and not truly and equally valued with the city, commission, and the third-party vendors and partner-sponsored proceedings. This is extremely disappointing and disheartening and needs to cease immediately. These remarks, comments, and suggestions not fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. All right, who's next? Yes, Ms. Poprovsky.
Nancy Poprovsky, story by Ranger Brian. I'm heartbroken and devastated to have lost my dream job as park ranger. Access to my personal government email was denied after my position was ripped out from under my feet. I'm a loving father, husband, and dedicated civil servant. I promised to defend and protect the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. I'm a work evaluation that reads exceeds expectations. I'm being trimmed as a consequence of the popular vote. I'm a U.S. flag raiser and folder. I'm my son's junior ranger idol. I'm a college I'm a college kid's dream job. I'm a voice for nineteen American Indian cultures. I'm the protector of twenty-five-hundred-year-old Indian burial mounds. I'm the defender of your public lands and waters. I'm the toilet scrubber and soap dispenser. I'm the highlight of your child's school day. I'm the Band-Aid for a skinned knee. I'm the lesson that should your children, that should live in a world of nature's gifts, not power or money. I taught your child the hawk's cry. I'm the wildflower that brought your student joy. I'm the one who told your child that they belong on this planet, their unique gifts are, and their existence matters. I advocate peace. I'm gone from my office. I am the resistance. I'm tired from weeks of being bullied and censored by billionaires. I'm tired of waking up at 2:00 a.m. wondering how I'm going to provide for my family. I'm tired of wiping my wife's tears and reassuring her that things will be okay. Things are not okay. I'm not okay. End of quote. The Democratic Party asks its followers to call officials nationally and locally to protest firing thousands of federal workers and deregulating pollution laws. I'm asking you to vote no on the Sheets project because the Sheets Republican Company supports the officials who have eliminated thousands of National Park Service jobs and are deregulating pollution controls like for fuel tanks at Sheets. Sheets will also jeopardize the environment by possibly recontaminating a cleaned-up site. The BP station will be competition for Sheets. Could close the BP and then need a cleanup since other gas stations can't compete or survive their monopoly. A vote yes for Sheets is supporting the Republican National Park Service elimination and environmental destruction. I hear things said here that we're better than a lot of things. So please say we're better than that and vote no to Sheets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poprowski. All right, anybody else tonight want to speak at public comment? Ma'am, you have to wait till you're recognized by the mayor. Does anyone else have their hand up? Okay, you can speak.
I'm sorry, I totally missed what you said.
Yeah, during the rules, you got it, you can't just come up to the podium. You have to, people may be raising their hand in the back before you. And so I have to call on the people that raise their hand first. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that for these meetings.
Oh, I just heard you say, was there anybody else?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so the protocol, just so I'll know in the future, I need to look around
No, you need to raise your hand if you want to speak.
to see if anyone is raising their hand.
If you want to raise, no.
And then instead of you saying, is there anyone else? You want me to wait until you call me, so you want me to raise my hand?
No, you raise your hand, so I know that you want to speak, and I call on you because if several people are raising their hand, I have to pick one. We can't all five come up.
Okay, the clock has started, so.
You can proceed.
Oh, you're using that as the time?
You're using your time.
Oh, there you are. Thank you so much. I just wanted to remind all of the Royal Oak voters that are watching that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. You hear that you don't have a lot of power as a taxpayer, but you do. You have the power of the vote. And if you feel that your elected city officials are not listening to you, you are under no obligation to reelect them. We hear a lot that the city officials are always here to help you, that they're always in the best interest of the voters. And then on your website, you talk about your environmental concerns. But I'm just wondering, are you really seriously concerned about the environment? What's in the best interest of the voters? Or are you really just looking for something under the auspices of new development? And right now, it happens to be a monopoly company, a billion-dollar company that's trending for gas stations. I also want to give a shout out to a gentleman named Ed that's here. I think he really wants to talk to some of the residents here in the city of Royal Oak to see what their concerns are about Sheets. So if you want to give me a call, my telephone number is 248-346-0439, or I can be reached at 248-832-2799. I can give you Ed's number over here and put you in touch with him, and maybe he can put the collage of information that he's seeking in the form of a documentary, and maybe that would be something good for the people. But I just want you to know, residents, that you matter. And there is an election coming. And you have to understand how important, and I can't stress this enough, how important your vote is. I am not a resident of the city of Royal Oak. I'm a housewife married to this handsome guy right here. We've been together since January 23rd of 2012, so we celebrated thirteen years of being together. I love my husband. I love being a housewife. And I also love speaking for the people that feel like they are voiceless. I go all over the state of Michigan as a volunteer, and I want to say that for the record. Testing one, two.
Can we just get your name for the, name and address for the record?
Oh, you didn't say that was required.
Yeah, at the beginning, we do when we read the rules. But that's, yeah. And it's on your agenda sheet too, in the back as well.
Oh, can I read it? I didn't see it. I'm so sorry. Let me just read it.
All right, well, apparently, we're gonna have one of those. Okay, all right, anybody else wish to speak tonight? Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're gonna close, close session, and we're gonna bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Or public comment, you're right. Too many closed sessions, Mr. Gachowski. Not tonight. Okay, all right. So we have next the consent agenda. And I'll remind the crew that we've already, during the approval of the agenda, pulled off item H, and that will be the first item we talk about before item seven. So does anyone wish to pull anything else off the consent agenda? All right, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to former item H of the consent agenda, Special Assessment Standard Resolution 5, 2024 Sidewalk Improvement Program. I see City Engineer Donahue was here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. The work associated with our 2024 sidewalk program is now complete. We're ready to move forward with standard resolution five. The target area from this past year was located between 12 Mile and 13 Mile, just west of Main Street, all the way to the city limits. This past year, there was a little over forty-six hundred total properties within the target area. Of those, six hundred and forty-nine had some work done at their properties and would be receiving an invoice. Properties had the opportunity to request a payment plan to pay off their bill over six years, if they wish, with a six percent interest rate. We have a few of those within this special assessment role tonight, but everybody else will be receiving a one-time bill for the sidewalk work. The city assessor has determined the special assessment district for the 2024 sidewalk work. Engineering has notified all the properties within the district of this item on the agenda tonight. Staff is recommending that we adopt standard resolution five for roll 2419-2402. And just a reminder that this is a roll call vote tonight.
Questions for Ms. Donahue. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm signing you thanks for coming out tonight. Two questions. We communicated the email earlier today. If there's questions or discrepancies maybe with a bill, residents still have an opportunity to have that fixed administratively, correct?
That's correct. Every year, there's a handful where we missed a flag or something is incorrect. So if they're brought to our attention, we will check that out. If a change needs to be made, we'll do that with the city treasurer and get that fixed before bills even go out.
Okay, so residents should know if there is an issue that there's potential resolution coming down.
Yes.
Okay. And then also, can you talk about why we don't grind sidewalks?
Actually, grinding is allowed up to one inch. We do not do it as part of our program, but residents have the opportunity to do that if they want to hire their own contractor. We don't want to go any more than one inch because at that point, you're just thinning up that concrete too much where it's gonna break off eventually. So one inch is our trip hazard, so if you're kind of in that middle zone, you can do that. I don't know of a resident that has taken us up on that and done that themselves, but it is an option.
That's an option, it's out there?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Donahue? All right, we have motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, this can be a roll call vote. We'll start with the motion maker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collo?
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheesem? Commissioner Hunt? Commissioner Macy? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is the 2025 Michigan Liquor Control Commission Licensed Establishment Review. I see Lieutenant Renault here. Are you gonna be doing the review tonight? All right.
Ready?
Yeah.
So thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Before you, you have the, it's actually the 2024 Annual On-Premise Liquor License Review Report, so it's reviewing everything from 2024. Attached to the report, you'll also find six years of statistical summaries of calls for service as well as a synopsis of calls for service for each establishment for 2024. The Royal Oak Police Department conducted a review of all on-premise liquor license establishments and found nineteen received violations during 2024. During the summer of 2024, the police department performed underage decoy operations at all on-premise liquor license establishments. So this is where eighteen of the nineteen violations occurred. These proactive enforcement details haven't occurred since 2020, so that's why we did them this year. The Royal Oak Fire Department and Building Department both conducted their annual reviews and inspections. The Building Department found no issues with any of the establishments. I spoke with Fire Inspector Tim Kansler for the Royal Oak Fire Department, who stated he is currently working with the ownership of the Royal Oak Tap House to remedy several minor issues. He does not object to the renewal of their license at this time. All liquor license renewal fees have been paid at the city's clerk's office. And after a thorough review, the police department does not object to the renewal of any existing on-premise licenses for 2025 into 2026. And I'll take any questions if you may have them.
Questions? None? Yeah, I mean, I think a good report, Lieutenant Renault, thank you for preparing it, very well understood. Thank you for summarizing it in a way that everybody can understand. And so I'm grateful for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, guys. A little wonky here. Now, that is, I'm looking here for... Do we need to receive and accept this? Mr. Gachowski?
No, if, if you're satisfied with the report and don't have any objections to any renewals, no actions necessary, and you can just move forward to the next item. And they'll renew automatically in the course with the MLCC.
All right, so this is an opt-in, make a motion if there is one or two establishments we didn't want to renew, which we have done in the past. But in this particular case, yeah, I was looking just to make sure we didn't have a file and receive. Okay, perfect, all right. I guess we're good. Nobody has any issues or anything to prevent any of our liquor license establishments to move forward? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, that brings us to item eight, which is the Proposed Ordinance Amendment, 2025-02 Human Rights Commission Student Membership First Reading. Ms. Barkman.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. What I have before you this evening is the first reading for an ordinance review for our Human Rights Commission in what, in terms of letters, maybe the shortest review or ordinance change I've ever done. Okay, too soon. We are, the, as you guys may remember, a few months ago, you changed the ordinance that directs student voting as a part of our boards and commissions. In January, the Human Rights Commission was reviewing their own bylaws and recognized some language that referenced non-voting students and wanted to amend that. That ordinance, the language is derived from the ordinance, so we need to change the ordinance, and I need to eliminate the "non" in "non-voting." So that is the only tweak. I did recognize that in the packet, the redlined copy, there was an issue there. But the clerk, I believe, passed a copy down for you if you would like to see the exact revision for what is in the ordinance. And I am here to take any questions you may have this evening.
Questions for Ms. Barkman? Non-questions? Questions on the non?
Touche. Well done there. That was, I think, your first one this evening.
When you had this as a check item, you're like, delete. Done. I need to go get a coffee. All right.
Stay away from what the hard work put into this, right?
That's right. No, I mean, there's a lot of, it's, it's a joke, obviously.
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of moving pieces, but, you know, this actual is the result of a lot of work done regarding the embodiment of student voting on our, on our commissions. So anybody wish to make a motion? Commissioner Herzog? Yeah, motion by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? I'll just say, I'll be supporting the motion because it's a amendment that reflects what this body voted for, even though I didn't vote to have student voter, you know, the ability for students to be able to, student representatives to be able to vote on these boards. Believe it or not, that's different than saying this is a legitimate change based on how this body as a total voted. So I have to put my juror mind on and decide to say to vote yes. I will say, I mean, I still have a little bit of, you know, I hope for the best, but, I mean, we've seen increasingly folks come out to this body. They've come out to our Planning Commission, they've come out to different boards, and if they don't agree with something, they tend to allege things and say things that are untrue about board members. And, you know, I just hope that folks will have a better temperament or better temperament towards our youth. And I will be the first to defend anybody that wishes to come after any of our youth board members by doxing them or saying improper things to them. Zero tolerance. So with that, I feel a little bit more comfortable, but I still, we'll see how this goes. You guys can tell me I was wrong, and I hope I'm wrong. So, but I'll be supporting this motion nonetheless. Commissioner Herzog?
I agree with you. We have zero tolerance for people that don't respect our students, and so we will stand up for them. But I love having student voices on our committees, especially on the Environmental Advisory Board. We had a student who then became a resident member who also mentioned that she might want to be a city manager one day. So we have stolen her. We're so excited that she is excited about being civically engaged. So I think this is just really great for our community, and so I'm gonna continue to support this.
All right, Mr. Gacho, we got a bench. Watch out.
It's getting hot.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the end of our agenda, not with... Oh, is he here tonight? Oh, yeah, actually, I'm gonna take this moment, and I apologize, I didn't see Mr. Yi here tonight. Let's all give a round for Mr. Yi. He joined the city of Royal Oak as our new DPS director. He's most recently coming from Oak Park. He has, he's well-known in the DPS circles. And we're very privileged and honored to have him join the Royal Oak team. Mr. Yi, anything, anything to add?
I just wanna say I'm equally as excited to join Royal Oak and join the team here. Everyone I've met has been...
Okay, I'll start over. I just wanna say I'm equally as excited to join the team, and I'm, everyone I've met has been so welcoming, and it's been a great community, and I'm excited to join in and to do my part here.
Well, we appreciate that, and we, you know, we're bringing you in, and we know a lot of good... a lot of good things about you, and we got a pretty good crew here in the city of Royal Oak, so I think you'll find it very enjoyable to work with some of the best professionals in the industry, both in your department and, you know, in other departments.
And at this table.
On this table, yeah, you know, solid, you know, six to one. There's one of us that's a problem. Guess who it is? But, no, this will be good.
All right.
I'm the problem, by the way, just so you know. All right. Well, good. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. We have a fast motion by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right. Oh, the discussion? Commissioner Teesum?
Well, it's Commissioner Herzog's birthday today.
Oh.
So I just feel like good in the welfare, just, it's good to get out early for Commissioner Herzog to enjoy the rest of her birthday, what's left of it, so. Thank you for being here with us on your birthday.
So I thought I was the only one that knew that, and I wasn't going to embarrass her, but now that two people know that, we're going to have to sing happy birthday.
You start. I'm going to turn my mic off. Hold on.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Commissioner Herzog. Happy birthday to you. All right.
Thank you.
Is your birthday too?
Thank you. Today is your birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
It's a good thing that we changed the, Michigan changed our bylaws to allow people under 25 to run for office, so we could sing happy birthday to you up here, so that's a pretty good thing. All right. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourn.